Good afternoon, everyone. Give me one second. I just need to pull something up. And we will get started. Okay. Do I need to unmute on Zoom or can they hear me? Because if I unmute on Zoom, it's going to be feedback, right? So am I good? Okay. Am I still good, Fran, or no? That's okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Am I good? Zoom still says unmuted. Okay. You want me to try again? Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. Hello, everyone. We're having a little technical difficulties. We'll be right with you. I think you jinxed it, Fran, because you said 5:30. This is on you. All right, good afternoon. So this is muted, but I still hear an echo. Is it okay? Because I unmuted my computer. That's why we're getting the feedback. Just do it anyway. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting this afternoon. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at the John. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We're headed into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment. There might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session items that we'll be discussing tonight are conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, public employee appointment and public employee performance evaluation. Staff, did we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you, everyone. We will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Oh, I forgot to open it. I opened the meeting now closing. See you at 6:30. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to our board meeting tonight. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejane. You can go to the corner of the room to get materials. We are returning from closed session. After our opening procedures, the public will have the opportunity to make public comment. The board has changed the public comment format. We have opportunities on non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last one hour. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board forum to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. After it has been turned in to staff, they are placed in the order when they are turned in. We also call on speakers one at a time and alternating between public comment at Dejane and one on Zoom. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. No yielding of time or substitution of speakers is permitted. The public will also have the opportunity to make public comment on agenda items after the staff presentation for each discussion and action item. The public will have 10 minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we will have the pledge of allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to agenda item B3, land, labor and body acknowledgement. With the land acknowledgement, do we have the video, please? Thank you very much, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi. Could you read it in person for us, please?
Yes, of course. We recognize that we are presently on the land so the Chichen Yum, Wekma, Kark and Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you very much. We are now going to move to the land, labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of black and brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that black and brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge that the continued contribution of their labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary trafficked force and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Now I'm going to read agenda item B4, the West Contra Costa Unified School District's school board anti-racist statement. The West Contra Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, to identify, challenge and correct the racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our school and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity that they produce have shaped us, our schools and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of our school board, individually and collectively, is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member and community partner is respected and valued member of the WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable policies in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each member of accountable towards these goals and moving the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding West Contra Costa Unified School District's staff, students and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, will you please do roll call?
Yes, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. Present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Phillips. He is absent at this time. Student trustee Jorge Espinoza, Jr.
Good evening, President.
And student trustee Luke Wilson.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now moving to item B6, report ratification of closed session. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
Thank you, ma'am. Regarding agenda item A2.1, the board took action to approve the special education settlement agreement in OAH case number 2024-080151. And the board voted as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. President Phillips was absent at that time. Regarding, I do apologize, trustee Phillips. Thank you. I apologize. Regarding agenda item A2.2, the board voted to approve the appointment of Dr. Julius Walker as an elementary school principal of Ford Elementary School. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Trustee Reckler, no. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Dr. Hurst, sorry, the vote was yes for everyone present.
I apologize. Trustee Reckler was a yes. And trustee Phillips was absent. Thank you for the correction. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you. We are now moving on to our student performance. We have a student performance from Richmond High School. We're going to come down there so we'll be able to see it. Thank you.
We'd like to welcome Melanie Samoza to introduce Alma Latina. Good evening, community and board members. My name is Melanie. We are Alma Latina of Richmond High School. It is a pleasure to be with you today celebrating Hispanic heritage month. Today we present the dance of Nicaragua and Mexico. I hope you enjoy it and thank you of having us today.
If you're a web designer, here are four Wix Studio features you gotta know. So first on the list, section grid. I'm talking about a revolutionary tool that lets you create your own intricate layouts, but still keeps it intuitive at every step. So you can split cells, create gaps between them, drag to resize and swap them around. All right. This next feature has saved me hours of work.
scrambling into T-Mobile to get the new iPhone 16 Pro built for Apple.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you so much, Richmond High School. That was absolutely amazing. We are now going to go to B8, WCCUSD public comment. How to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak on, speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to any issue, any issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak. Oh, maybe I wasn't on. Let me start again. We are now, thank you very much, Richmond High School. We're now going to agenda item B8, WCCUSD public comment. How to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form. Or participating via Zoom, individuals need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. I am also the Student Information Services Systems Supervisor for the West Contra Costa Unified School District. Today I'm here to talk to you again about our EBF forms. I know y'all excited, right? We are at 75.5%. We have numerous forms in our office that the families have filled out. I actually heard from a cabinet member that they were visiting a school site and they were offered to fill, asked, did you fill out your EBF form for your student multiple times before leaving a school site? Go schools. Keep going for it. Keep getting that funding going so that we have services at our school sites. This is what it's all about. Get those forms in, parents. We have 5,665 to go. I'm betting right now at the stack that's in my office at the moment because we're hand putting in several of them, that we probably will be down to 5,200 by Friday. So I'm really So I'm really excited and I know y'all are too. I'm going to give a big shout out to Niestram, Hannah, Hercules Middle, Coronado, Olinda Grant, Verde, Lincoln Lake, and Washington. They have upped their numbers in the last week and I can't be more proud of them. They are doing a tremendous job. I would also like to say Perry's, Ella Hurst Middle College Greenwood, Downer, and Valley View and Bayview have no forms left to do. So that is an amazing feat right there. I think it's awesome. Also, I'm going to give a shout out. Classified people, we have a training day, October 14th. It is all about you. So please, everybody, start putting that on your calendar, mark it down. It is all about our people in classified on that day and getting the training out for you. We're going to make your teams a better person. Have a great day, everybody.
Our next public comment is Sean Kozelich. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Thank you. I spoke at the last board meeting to advocate for my daughter Leanna, a junior at Vista High, and for her teacher and mentor Katie Marquezzi and the school itself. I shared that our disabled daughter found her academic home with Katie at Vista and that our family life transformed the moment Katie came into it. She and her colleague Eric were about to go through the process of the coin toss to determine which of them would have to transfer to another campus. Leanna also addressed you herself last month and concluded with a statement. "I honestly don't know if Vista will work for me without Katie. I understand that schools have money issues, but I'm a human being and all of Katie's students are in the same boat I am. Please consider us when you make your decision. Thank you." And tonight, Leanna cannot address you herself as she intended to because she's experiencing a flare of the very medical issues that plague her life and prevent her from thriving in a public, typical public high school. Tonight, she would have shared that this district and its extraordinary leadership indeed treated her and the students of Vista like human beings. After several follow-up meetings with the district and families, teachers and staff of Vista have been given the support we need to build out this gem of the district. Katie and Eric remain in their positions to continue their righteous work of making space for every student who needs a Vista in their lives. Leanna was just shown firsthand how advocacy is meant to work and she and our family are eternally thankful for the leadership and vision of our district leaders. We are all in with WCCUSD and Vista and look forward to working with our partners in the district to help serve all families who want to join the Tiger family. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Pedro Agredano.
Good evening, Superintendent Hurst, President Jamila Smith Fols, and Board Members and Student Trustees. I'm here to respectfully ask if you would put in a policy, a board policy, on the fact for the trades, the custodians, IT, and everybody in classified security and others to be treated with respect. Some of the things that we have to do and hear and how we're treated doesn't make us feel too comfortable. There's no reason, we try our best to address all issues. With every new item that brings into the schools, there's a new challenge. With every budget and losing money and the rise of everything, it makes it harder for supplies and other things, delay some parts and everything affect all of us. We work so that the students have everything they need. We work as hard, just because we chose a trade, custodial, IT grounds, doesn't mean that we're not educated. There's a lot of us that have college degrees. We chose the work that we do because we like it, we enjoy it, and we serve a purpose, the students, which is the most important because they are our tomorrow. I hope this board continues their work and does a policy so that we are treated with the respect that we deserve. Thank you.
Our next public comment is David Bayloo. Please unmute yourself.
I wanted to start by thanking Kim Moses and her team for their presentation and discussion at the Budget Committee meeting last night. Her team has made some significant strides clearly presenting the serious budget issues facing our district due to declining enrollment and attendance. It's important, it's important that there is a shared reality around this. This is a very difficult situation that is not unique to our district. San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley Unified School Districts are all confronting the same or similar issues. The overall message delivered by CBO Moses's team, however, is no different from what Dr. McIntyre relayed to this board three years ago, which is that we run structural deficit because enrollment and attendance have significantly declined, but staffing levels did not change to match that. While it was good to hear board members fully recognize this last night, recognition of our current reality does not absolve board members from their past votes and actions. As board members, you have to be accountable. And this board has shown a disturbing pattern of fiscally irresponsible votes that have led to direct oversight from the county. The board has also shown a clear pattern of dysfunctional communication and interaction amongst trustees that has impacted the board's ability to serve the community. Both of these patterns have to change. Getting to a balanced budget will require the board to work together to make extremely difficult choices going forward. If you are unable or unwilling to do this, the state will come in and take over. They will close schools and the kids who will be hurt most will be the most vulnerable ones in our district. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Francisco Ortiz.
Good evening, board members, superintendent and community. I'm Francisco Ortiz, fifth degree teacher at Ford Elementary and president of United Teachers of Richmond. Tonight, I'm deeply concerned about the staffing crisis in our schools. UTR has visited 27 school sites thus far and the staffing, and the findings are troubling. Too many of our classrooms are being staffed by long-term substitutes or retired teachers who cannot commit to finishing the school year. Too many educators are over their class size maximums in secondary and we are past the contractual deadline to balance classes. This instability hurts our students, leading to disruptions in their education and undermining the consistency they need to thrive. The ability of students to build relationships and learn in stable environments is critical. But with so many vacancies and the over-reliance on temporary staff, we are putting our schools and our students at a severe disadvantage. Our students are deserving of fully staffed schools with permanent educators who can be there for them throughout the year. I also want to take a moment to congratulate and appreciate the board for finally passing the Community Schools Resolution tonight. This is a positive step for our district, even though it came two years later than it should have. However, I'm also concerned about the stipulation that the continuation of community schools program in our district is contingent upon ongoing state funding. The district had a community schools program before the state grant and has now made it a priority and a highlight of the strategic plan. To now say that its future depends on external funding is unsettling. We must commit to supporting this transformative strategy regardless of state funding fluctuations to ensure our students receive the comprehensive services and support that they need. Tonight, you will learn that the district under-projected revenue by $50 million last year, almost twice as much as our grant that was awarded two years ago. Enough to fund the program for almost 10 years. Let's build the trust with our community and truly invest in our community schools. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, all. So these past few weeks have been something else. From celebrating the life of my most favorite teacher, Coach Alameda, to on this past Monday, celebrating the life of my sister-girlfriend teacher extraordinaire Gina Stewart at Pinole Valley High School. I've been asking myself, how do I get back on solid footing? And today, being a Wednesday, I started what I usually do, sharing a video from the number one motivational speaker, Dr. Eric Thomas, otherwise known as ET, the Hip-Hop Preacher. I showed my students his UOU video. And here are a few, here are a few of the points. Stop being a victim and start being a victor. Make guarantees to yourself. Stop making excuses and look yourself in the mirror. And lastly, being born of a teen mom is not an excuse to not be your best self. This last one I share with my students is me. My mom was a teen mom. Their eyes let me know they were surprised. I let them know it's not how you start, it's how you choose to live each day to do better and be better than the day before. And my purpose and my passion is to be the bridge and a hand up to their goals towards success. Now, in closing, please prioritize your self-care. I have had to learn this lesson the hard way, and this is just for everybody. Please prioritize your self-care. Also, to our classified staff, I value you and I respect you. Today, I had classified staff deliver some bookshelves because I needed them in my portable and I have some workplace injuries. I had to be patient, but they were kind. They were just very helpful. And I just really wanted to say, since I heard somebody talk about classified staff tonight, I value you and I respect you. So peace, love, and blessings to all and everybody have a wonderfully blessed night.
Our next public comment is Sam Clear.
Good afternoon. My name is Sam Clear and I am the Organizing Committee Chair with the United Teachers of Richmond. During my seven years at Siege, there were vacancies every year. We would start with empty classrooms or lose teachers later in the year. Many students would work with three different teachers during the year. One parent called this process musical chairs. Last year, there were four classrooms without teachers for the entire year. Unfortunately, this is not an isolated incident in this district. UTR leadership has visited 27 schools so far this year. At least nine of them are highly impacted by vacancies. Vacancies negatively impact some of these schools chronically. Not to mention, our sped providers have untenable overages and teachers are taking extra FTE and are having to period sub. We need to support our teachers and place emphasis on recruiting and retaining our talented educators. I am concerned that the vacancy crisis will continue to hurt our most vulnerable students if we don't change our focus. Teacher burnout is a top reason for teachers leaving the profession. Teachers don't get to collaborate with grade level partners when there are vacancies. They also take more students when there aren't even enough tables and chairs. They are stretched too thin. While at Siege, multiple parents told me that they took their kid out of the school because they didn't have a teacher. We need to make WCCUSD a place where teachers are proud to be and students and families feel supported and heard. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Amy Miles. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, like Sean, I'm here to inform parents about a gem of a school in our district, Vista Virtual Academy, an alternative education setting that uses independent studies as a vehicle for learning. Vista sees and understands the student. In traditional school settings, neurodiverse kids like mine and parents like me spend so much time and energy fighting to be seen and understood. At Vista, we are understood. The Vista faculty, staff, and administration are an invaluable asset to this district and I want to personally thank our district leaders for investing in this miraculous school. My daughter transferred to the Vista Virtual Academy in the middle of sixth grade in February 2022 with extensive educational trauma. Although she had talented and well-meaning teachers, she could no longer function in a comprehensive traditional classroom setting. Her needs were not being met. The Vista special education setting and climate, especially the one-on-one attention, has helped my daughter show up for learning. In fact, she sees herself as an academic weapon bound for UCLA, evidence of what can happen to an educationally traumatized child who has a teacher in school that makes space for learning to happen your way, as the school's tagline reads. As a parent, educator, and community member, I'm in awe of Vista. It provides transformational education for some of our most vulnerable and high-need students, healing and supporting and challenging them with empathy and genuine caring. At this alternative school, the teachers, administration, and staff care about and are invested in their students' academic and human lives, fully aware that traditional metrics like testing scores and data does not capture the entirety of their students' successes. Since students feel seen and heard and whole, they emerge from Vista as self-advocating scholars and agents of change. For parents who are here listening because their child is suffering in a traditional classroom in this district, consider transferring your child to the Vista Family of Schools. It's a beacon of light and hope for our kids and families.
Our next public comment is Gabrielle Michiellotti.
Hello, I'm Gabrielle Michiellotti, Vice President of United Teachers of Richmond. Over the past three years, business services has taken over our ADA projections and has created overly pessimistic projections that are hurting our students. Now, our educators and our students are paying the consequences for that. Despite being past the time limit, we have schools where classes are still not finalized as our counselors scramble to find ways to get our students into the classes they need. And our teachers are pressured to work their preps in order to have enough classes for our students and meet A through G requirements to keep opportunities available to them. I learned just tonight that Kennedy does not have an ELD one option. You just go straight to ELD two, whether or not you're ready for it. I also learned Pinole Middle does not offer English Lit to their ELD students because they do not have enough English spaces. We have farcical situations in our elementary classes such as a one-two combo class that has a singular first grader in the class. One first grader and we're calling it a combo. That child is understandably struggling in that isolating setting. Students are displaced to different schools, weeks into the school year, and families are split across multiple sites because we have not projected enough space in our schools. Our service providers such as SLPs and Sykes are assessing so many children, it is not humanly possible for them to meet the legal timelines. This under-projection and the challenges it causes harm our students, often the same students year after year, and they burn our educators out. We need to interrupt these patterns, fully staff our schools, and give our children the educations they deserve. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jean Kinscher. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I would like to piggyback on that a bit. I have been advocating for Verde to go from a TKK model to a TK and a K classroom. We have an appropriate school room with the appropriate bathrooms and everything, but yet somehow we can't do that. I keep being told, oh, you don't have enough kids. Even Francie told me at the beginning of the year, oh, they were going to cancel it. I'm not sure how we cancel a combo for TK, but TK was going to get canceled. I have 13. Two of them were unassigned. I would have had, we would have had 15 plus any overflow. But for some reason, we just can't get this class split out. We really, really want to keep our students there. What do we have to do? The projections are like, I don't know how you guys come up with those projections, but the principal keeps saying, nope, we can't do it. We're not allowed to have another teacher. And it's just, it's harming our children because now they're going to other schools. They're being assigned to other schools. And that means now we're displacing kindergartners as well, creating a one-two combo situation in first grade, second grade, you know, like that. And it's just, it's not fair to them. They won't split the seventh and sixth grade that have like less, way less than 30. They want to combo them because they have to have their academia. But what about the kids learning to read? Don't they have to have their academia too? They only have half the time now because they're in a combo. It's just, it's not cool. I'm really, really, really hoping that somehow we can get this sorted out. We can look at the numbers the way they are and figure out how to get a TK and the two kindergartners or classes or whatever that, you know, comes our way sorted out. If we have to have like a TK and maybe a TKK combo, at least then we can shuffle the more academic-based, ready kids into the combo and have the other ones in the playbase. It's just very, very difficult when we can't offer a playbase TK. And I did step up and volunteer to do that. And I did step up and volunteer to do that, which is fine, but my dream, my hope, was to provide a TK for the students at our school. We are the only school in North Richmond. It would be nice if our community could have a TK there as well. So hopefully, maybe next year, we can try again and have a TK class there by itself. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Mark Mitchell.
Good news. The unaudited actuals report has been made public. And yet again, for at least the fourth year in a row, our school district has realized tens of millions of dollars more in revenue than it projected in its adopted budget for the 2324 school year. We now know the district received $50 million more, an error of over 10%, than it told us it would when you adopted the budget in June 2023. This may seem like purely positive news that we should celebrate. However, the fact that an adopted budget sold wildly under-projected revenue, yet was imposed upon West County students and the educators and support staff that serve them, has caused irreparable educational loss to our students and has driven hundreds of early-career educators and others from employment with our district. Under projection of revenue yet again this year is a strategy imposed by Contra Costa County's mean-spirited anti-student, anti-teacher, anti-public-education county superintendent of schools Lynn Mackey. Mackey hurts students by insisting that our district staff present to you, year after year, a proposed budget which wildly underestimates revenue that frankly, teachers and their union through our political action have secured for this district, not to hoard away and reserve accounts, but to serve West County students. But when you, although well-intentioned, adopt these overly miserly Mackey-inspired budgets, what that means for district educators and students is another year of destabilization, involuntary transfers, involuntary reassignments, classrooms full of students but no teachers to provide instruction, long-term subs unlawfully used to teach our students, and hundreds and hundreds of vacancies for the educational support professionals needed to serve our most vulnerable students. And of course, Mackey's mean-spirited oversight of our district is especially harmful to West County's black and brown students, precisely some of the students this board hopes to ensure are adequately supported.
Our next public comment is Edith Jordan McCormick. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board. Thank you first to the Board, Board trustee superintendent Hearst for this moment. I've had the pleasure of serving this board for nine years, and I call myself the happiest and luckiest principal in WCCUSD because I'm the principal of the Vista Family Schools. That's Vista High School that was established in 1987 and the Vista K-12 Virtual Academy that I had the pleasure of being the lead designer on and opening in 2021. I want to thank Dr. Hearst for just taking the time out of his super-busy schedule to come do the best read aloud with our littles. The other day, as I'm listening to this board meeting and all the serious things going on, the impact of just that time spent with them was so valuable. And we really thank you. Running the Virtual Academy has probably been one of the best challenges of my life. And today, I just want to share just some amazing highlights. We just received our full WASC accreditation. We received a full six-year, and we did something amazing. We WASC our entire school. That means I had my elementary teachers WASC-ing. Every single person or part of the Vista Family Schools took part of our WASC process as we did a deep self-study and looked at who we are and what we have to offer. And as we continue to challenge people to come and see what we have to offer and deal with board cuts and different things, I just want to invite you guys to come take a peek at what's going on with us. We do use independent studies, and the name is a misnomer. We do not have teachers meet with kids and give work packets. We define independent studies as a facilitative, side-by-side approach to learning, where you put the student at the center of your work, and the parents and/or caregivers and teachers collaborate on their student's success. That's how learning happens, the students' way. So again, I want to thank the board. It's been a pleasure being of service. And also superintendent Hearst for making the time for the Tiger family. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Kelly Carey.
Good evening, Board members, superintendent, and community. United Teachers of Richmond is not making these observations because we're in bargaining or we want a specific use for all of this extra money. What teachers and their union want is that Dr. Hearst, Dr. Moses in our school board, show courage and stand up to the bullies at the county office and stand up to the abusive tactics and rhetoric of Mike Fine from FCMAT. Let's honestly represent the resources that will be available for our students and begin to use today's dollars to serve today's students. Teachers want an end to the chronic destabilization of our schools, which is cheating West County students of the education they deserve and in the process, demoralizing the educators and support staff who come here wanting to serve our students and families. With this latest unaudited actuals report, we have undeniable evidence that Mackey and her overseers are wrong yet again. As we do every year, we have more money, 10% more than projected, $50 million more, and we need to stop acting like the sky is falling every single year and start prioritizing the stabilization of our schools and not the demands of ham-fisted county superintendent Lynn Mackey. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Karlyn Jovanello. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Karlyn Jovanello, and I'm speaking today as a concerned parent of a first grader in a class in Washington Elementary that has faced ongoing instability since the beginning of the year. As many of you on the board know, we've already shared our concerns about how this inconsistency is directly affecting the quality of education our children are receiving. The uncertainty that we're all experiencing has left parents and students across the school in limbo. And while we have a temporary substitute who has been wonderful and has provided some continuity, they are lacking credentials and the experience needed for effective long-term instruction. This issue, I think, really speaks to the larger vacancy crisis that we are seeing and hearing about across the schools in our district. And it's clear that our children are being impacted by a system struggling to find qualified, permanent DLI instructors. The collaboration with other first-grade teachers has been helpful. I want to give them a shout out, but it doesn't fully address the disruptions that our children are experiencing. As most of you know, as educators, consistency is vital to our children's development, both academically and emotionally. And the constant changes in their classroom environment are causing many of these kids to feel demotivated and disengaged, which is troubling at such a formative stage in their education. As well, the lack of clarity about what's going to happen next, whether our regular teacher is returning or we're going to have a permanent solution. It's only adding to the uncertainty that we're all feeling. I'd say despite our many efforts to try and work with the board and potentially the administration of our school, we do feel that support has been lacking in addressing these concerns. And as a parent group, we understand the broader vacancy challenges, but we do believe the system as it stands right now in our district is failing our children. We are asking for your advocacy to prioritize a stable and qualified educational environment for our students, underlining again that consistency in their learning experience is essential.
Our next public comment is Joseline Dustin.
Good evening, and thank you for being here tonight. And this is my first time addressing the board. I'm a parent of a first grader at Washington Elementary, and I am a little bit nervous. So apologies. I want to piggyback off of Karlyn's comments about the instability in the class from the beginning of the year. But one thing that I have observed as a parent emailing into the board, working with the administration of our school, is that oftentimes, these conversations can feel like a bunch of grownups speaking to each other. So we'll invite you to do, feel comfortable closing your eyes. You don't have to. But I would like for all of us to take one big breath in and out. And I would invite you to remember yourself as a small child with a backpack on, getting ready for school. Excuse me, I'm making it a little emotional. And I would like for you to remember that excitement and the trepidation and that little bit of anxiety as you first start school. And then I would like for you to imagine that you walk into your classroom, and your teacher is not who you thought it would be. And then the following day, you have another teacher who is not who you thought it would be. You go home, and you wonder, is this the rest of the way that the school year is going to go? You look to your grownups, your parents, your teachers, the administrators of your school for support, but you feel how somehow they're not able to deliver, and that compounds your anxiety. Potentially, you don't want to go to school anymore. Potentially, you feel like your grownups don't have your back. So what I wanted to do to come here tonight is to remind all of us in this room, community, board members, educators, that we need to center the children and the children's experience.
And our last public comment is Allison Huey. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, trustees and staff members. I wanted to thank you so much for putting on this agenda and for doing the work to propose the menstrual equity resolution tonight. It's an amazing piece of work. I'm so happy and proud that this is part of our district's work. I just wanted to say that there's one piece that I didn't see in the resolution that I hope that we might be able to include tonight, which is the inclusion of receptacles that are necessary in each of the stalls of all of the bathrooms served by all students as part of the resolution. So that's my hope, and that's my ask. And I just thank you all so much for doing such great work.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, staff, for the public, or thank you so much, staff, for facilitating the public comment. Thank you to the public for your comments. We are now going to move to agenda item B9, Agenda Review and Adoption. Board, are there any changes? Seeing none, without objection, the agenda is now adopted. We are now moving to B10, Approval of Minutes, August 28, 2024. Are there any changes? Seeing none, without objection, the minutes are now adopted. We are now moving to C, Consent Items. Board, are there any items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, the consent is now adopted. We are now moving to D, Superintendent Communication. Dr. Hearst, this is your item.
Thank you very much, ma'am. If you could pull up the presentation, please. We'd like to say good evening to everyone, to our board members and public that's listening online. We first want to give a shout out to Director Forrest. As you look at the superintendent's report and look at the new innovative design, this is from her leadership, and her team is well. So thank you so much for your creativity. If we can go to our next slide. We do have a memoriam that we want to share with you. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our community who've passed away. I regret to inform you that Eric Crow recently passed away. Mr. Crow worked for the district since 1998 as a PE teacher at Pinole Middle School before transferring to Greenwood Academy. Principal Johnson and the Greenwood Academy students and staff will always remember Mr. Crow as a person who is well-liked and respected and a team player who will be missed. We thank and honor Mr. Crow for his commitment to WCCUSD students and staff. Please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. Next slide. We had a remarkable time at Betty Reed Soskin School, and we were able to celebrate Ms. Betty Reed as she turned 103. Wow. I've never been in the presence of a person who was 103, so it was really heartwarming for me as well and a special moment. So on Friday, September 20th, Betty Reed Soskin at the school celebrated Ms. Soskin's 103rd birthday. The celebration included a heartwarming moment as students sang loudly, "Happy Birthday" to Ms. Soskins. And we also had a really special moment in previewing the documentary film, Sign My Name to Freedom. It highlights Ms. Soskin's remarkable life, including her hidden talent as a singer-songwriter. And it was a really special moment to just listen and hear her sing. What a beautiful voice. A special thank you to Principal Irvin, Vice Principal Lau, and the Betty Reed team and the students for organizing and celebrating Ms. Betty Reed Soskins and her birthday. Next slide. We also had some district highlights we wanted to share with you. And first, we want to just acknowledge Hispanic Heritage Month, celebrated between September 15th and October 15th. A lot was going on. We had a great time at the Kermit's Parade. On September 22nd, the Washington Elementary PTA and Point Richmond Business Association hosted the annual Kermit's Festival. This free community event held live music, artisan vendors, and community resources. We had a really good time. Also, in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, we had another celebration that was a Latin American Independence Day celebration. And this happened on September 14th. Several schools from WCCUSD in Richmond and the San Pablo area joined in the festivities. The participation of our district schools in this event was a true testament to the rich diversity and cultural spirit within our community. A recap of the festivities is available on the district's Instagram page, where you can catch all the vibrant moments and all of the highlights. Next slide. We also wanted to share some district highlights for the 29th Annual El Sabrante Stroll. So on Sunday, September 15th, WCCUSD schools, bands, cheerleading squads, and students participated in the 29th Annual El Sabrante Stroll. The El Sabrante Chamber of Commerce, in partnership with the City of Richmond rallies, the West County Water, Wastewater District, hosted and organized this annual event along the San Pablo Dam Road. This block party originated nearly 30 years ago to support and promote local businesses as chain shopping centers began to pop up in the area. Next slide. Another district highlight. This is science experience at Riverside Elementary and Ms. Harrison's sixth-grade class. So shout out to Ms. Harrison. Her students showcased science projects that combined creativity, engineering, and renewable energy. They worked in pairs to build mini solar-powered cars using small solar panels. Next slide. We also want to give a shout out to the Albany Lions Club for their district backpack giveaway. On September 19th, retired WCCUSD member Valerie Griffin and her twin sister Victoria, they gave away nearly 50 backpacks for the district, and those will be distributed to our students. Thank you so much, Valerie and Victoria. And some exciting news and other district highlights from El Cerrito High School. And some exciting news and other district highlight from El Cerrito High School Cheer Team. Over the summer, the El Cerrito High School Cheer Team attended the Cheer Stunt Camp in Reno, Nevada. Three cheerleaders won a dance competition at the camp, earning the prestigious opportunity to participate in the twenty twenty four Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade in New York City. And you can see the reel being played right now as I'm reading through this. The team received recognition for their outstanding jumps and impeccable technique. So we want to say congratulations to the El Cerrito High School Cheer Team. Great job. And then we have some events that are coming up. We want to remind you of the High School Back to School Night that will be September the twenty sixth. And we're asking you to contact your school for the details. Remember, High School Back to School Night, September twenty sixth. Next slide. Another event coming up, we're going to remind you of the Special Education Parent Conference, September twenty eighth. This is a virtual opportunity. It's going to be from nine AM to one PM. And you can see this is a free conference for families of students with exceptional needs. You can also see some of the topics that are going to be offered. Student Voices, Everyone Has Mental Health, the IEP Process and Parents' Rights, and Supporting Siblings of Children with Exceptional Needs. Next slide. Another upcoming event. So reminder, College and Career Night, October the tenth. That'll be from five PM to seven PM, and this will be at El Cerrito High School. And we're asking you to use the QR code or dial a phone number as well to sign up at RSVP. And next slide. Also, we want to remind our board and the community of the West Contra Costa Unified School District School Board Forum. And we want to share with you, that'd be Monday, October twenty first. This is sponsored by the Women's Voters, the League of Women Voters. And that will be at Deanza High School at their theater. And from District One, we have our own president, Camila Smith Folds. District Two, we have Trustee Christian. And also Guadalupe and Yana. I hope I didn't mess that up. Is that right? Thank you. And then District Three, Cynthia Hernandez. And then also, we want to share with you upcoming is Parents as Partners and Leaders Conference. That's going to be on October the twenty sixth. This is also free. We'll have translation services available. There'll be childcare available also and snacks and other resources. This would be at Dejawn Middle School. And this would be from nine AM to one PM. And you can see some of the topics that will be discussed is technology, five things families should know about the phone use, African-American student achievement, and how to support your child's well-being, and more topics. And then we want to encourage everyone listening to get involved. We want to constantly share with you our parent advisory committees. And I'll just share with you the next meetings. We have our African-American Parent Advisory Committee, our APAC. We're asking you to check with your school sites because the meeting and dates may vary. We have our African-American Site Advisory Committee, ASAT, next meeting, October the eighth, at five thirty PM to seven. Our Dual Language Immersion Parent Advisory Committee, DLI PAC, October the tenth, from five PM to six PM. Our Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, or our CAC, October the third, five thirty PM to seven PM. Our District Local Control Accountability Plan, our DLCAP, October the twenty second, from six thirty PM to eight thirty PM. And then our Multilingual District Advisory Committee, our MDAC, October the seventeenth, from nine AM to eleven. Next slide. We also want to remind you of our CBOC meeting. The next meeting is October twenty first, from six fifteen to eight fifteen PM. And then our Seven Eleven Committee, October the first, from six to eight PM. I know there was a lot of announcements, but we were excited to share. And ma'am, this concludes the superintendent report. We turn it back over to you.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any questions? Seeing none, we are now moving to agenda item E. The first agenda item is E one, the twenty four twenty five Segal Plan for Student Achievement, SPSAs. Ms. Sigler, this is your item.
Thank you and good evening. Before I begin, we do have to pull one of the SPSAs. We wanted to bring the last three this evening. But despite great efforts, Stige was unable to get Quorum to vote in this SPSA. So we'll be bringing them back October ninth. But we are putting Mira Vista and Vista Virtual School forward. And so we are asking that you vote to approve these SPSAs and that we are certifying that the funds are allocated in accordance with the site plans that have been approved by the school site councils. And they have also been approved by the ELAX and the APACs. So we do recommend your approval.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any questions? Go ahead, sir.
So I would like to ask, given the current trend of funding reductions across various programs and initiatives, I would like to understand more why classified salaries appear to be one of the few areas receiving more funding than its estimated costs in the unrestricted general fund expenditures.
So I think that's a great question for CBO Moses, but it actually doesn't pertain to this agenda item. This agenda item is about the school site plans and how the school sites are allocating their budgets.
CBO Moses, would this be more, would it be able to be answered under E three? The budget presentation?
Yes, that will be the appropriate time.
Hold that, Fran. That was a good question. Hold it, and then we're going to do it at E three. Are any other questions? No, seeing none. May I have a motion?
President Smith Folds, I move that we approve the SPSAs for Mira Vista K eight and Vista Virtual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Board, are there any comments?
President, I'm so sorry. Can I just confirm that it's Vista Virtual only, or is it Vista Land and Virtual?
Yes, both.
Okay, sorry. Then I'll change my motion if it's okay. Vista Virtual and Land and Mira Vista K.
Do you still second? Trustee Christian. Thank you. Are there any comments? Seeing none, let's go straight to the vote. Trustee Wilson, your votes, please, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now going to move on to E two, Provisional Internship Permit, PIP. I'm going to try to pronounce your whole name because I'm feeling confident. Ms. Catherine Acosta Veraspos. No, also shouldn't be so confident. Ms. Catherine, this is your item.
Very good. Thank you so much. President Smith Folds, a member of the board. The provisional internship permit allows our newly hired teachers to enter an internship program with our school district.
Thank you so very much. Are there any public comments?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
President Smith Folds, I move that we approve the provisional internship permits.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you so much. Do we have any comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Wilson, your vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving to agenda item E three, Approve Un-audited Actual Financial Statements for twenty three twenty four school year. Dr. Moses, this is your item, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Good evening, President Smith Folds. Good evening, board, and good evening, public. We are bringing forward our financial statements for the fiscal year twenty twenty four this evening. This is the end of our budget cycle, which began July first, twenty twenty three, and ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Sorry, there's feedback. On September fifteenth, our business services team submitted the unaudited actuals report to our county office of education and CDE through our SACS reporting software. Tonight, we are bringing forward that information to the board to seek board approval to enter these financial statements into the record. The reports are presented as of the closing of our books, June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. It accurately reflects the actual expenditures for the previous school year. The SACS forms also reflect the adopted budget for twenty four twenty five, but they do not include forty five day revision updates. The financial impact will be explained during the presentation in our recommendation this evening. And that is that the board accept the unaudited actuals as presented. I am very pleased to introduce our Director of Fiscal Services, Mr. Jeff Carter, who will present the information to you this evening.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank the business service team, business services team, who did a tremendous amount of work to get the books closed and get these reports ready for you by September fifteenth. We've submitted them to the county. Now we're presenting them to the board tonight. Tonight, we're going to go over the funding factors, the revenue and expenditure comparisons, a multi-year projection for twenty four twenty five, contributions from the general fund, and next steps. First, we'll go over the general funding factors. So these are factors that go into calculations for our revenue on the year. The revenue allocations are based upon ADA. Our ADA is equivalent to our enrollment times the rate of daily attendance. Across the state statewide, there's a trend of declining enrollment that you'll see present in WCCUSD as well. Over the last six years, you'll see about an average of four hundred and twenty five students dropping year over year for enrollment. In twenty eighteen nineteen, we started the year with twenty eight thousand one hundred and twenty one students enrolled. And in twenty three twenty four, we have twenty five thousand five hundred and seventy four students. These all will factor into how much revenue we get year over year. In twenty three twenty four, our ADA was funded on a three-year average of two thousand twenty two, twenty three, and the two prior years. So our funded ADA in twenty three twenty four was twenty four thousand seven hundred and twenty one point five one students. Even though our actual ADA for twenty three twenty four was twenty three thousand four hundred and seventy four point two four enrollment. Our ADA, sorry. So we were funded on the higher amount. You can either get the current year ADA or the three-year average from your prior years. Currently, our three-year average is higher, so we take the funding on the three-year average. If our ADA ever improves above our three-year average, so once we see ADA increasing over the years, we may switch over to a singular year of ADA. But for now, we're still on the three-year average due to declining enrollment and declining ADA. Next slide, please. Another funding factor is the COLA. So you might hear that the state COLA was eight point two two percent this year. Our effective COLA was actually four point three six percent when you compare revenue from last year to revenue to this year in LCFF. The biggest factors that go into reducing that COLA is declining enrollment and reduced average daily attendance. So prior to COVID, our ADA average was about ninety six percent. And in twenty three twenty four, our ADA was about ninety one point seven percent. So a massive decrease over the last few years in ADA. So if we can get that back up, you would see a more fulfilled COLA. On the chart there at the bottom, twenty three twenty four, our revenues from LCFF were three hundred and forty four point nine million dollars. Twenty two twenty three unaudited actuals, three hundred and thirty point five million dollars. So the difference between those two years unaudited actuals is fourteen point four million dollars for an effective percent change or increase on LCFF revenue of four point three six percent. So that's why we don't get the full, as well as one of our larger grants from LCFF does not receive the COLA. So there's a few factors in why we don't receive a flat or a full eight point two two percent increase since we are declining enrollment and ADA. Next slide. Okay, so we're going to jump into revenue comparisons. Next slide. Okay, so revenue comparisons. Here, we're comparing estimated actuals to unaudited actuals since that is the last reported figure that we've given you and have the board approved. You can see a change in unaudited actuals revenue of an increase of two million dollars since April thirtieth. Other state revenue, an increase of about a million dollars, and local revenue increased about three point one million dollars. We'll go into where those are coming from on a couple of slides from now. So next slide. These are restricted revenue changes since estimated actuals by revenue. So a decrease in federal revenue by six point five million that typically comes from unearned revenue grants that we don't get to report on unless our expenditures meet our projections, which federal expenditures were lower than expected. So that's why we have less revenue. Other state revenue increased by two point eight million since estimated actuals, and local revenue increased by four point one million dollars. Those are mostly from increased lottery revenue or earned interest on our cash balance. Next slide. So here we have a graph showing our revenues and where they come from. So you'll see that sixty four point seven percent is coming from LCFF sources, nine point five percent from federal, eighteen percent from other, and seven point eight percent from local revenue. We'll jump to the next slide. This is a combined chart of unrestricted and restricted general fund revenue. So the two charts prior, these are the sum in one graph for you. So two million increase in LCFF sources from increased LCFF calculations. Federal revenue is decreased from decrease in expenditures, which turned into less revenue. And then state revenue, three point eight million higher, local revenue, seven point two million higher. Again, these are due to increased lottery sales, which were unexpected, and we don't get the report on that until after the school year closes. Then we have increased interest revenue. You'll see much higher revenues than what we projected at the beginning of the year due to higher interest rates. And then Medi-Cal revenue, fees collected from leases and rentals, and donations also fall under the state and local revenue increases. Next slide. We'll jump into expenditure comparisons now. These are the unrestricted general fund expenditures. So you can see what we in total spent out of general fund for each of the major object categories, such as salaries, benefits, materials and supplies, and contracts. Since estimated actuals, the certificated salaries was decreased by about two million dollars. But some of those were actually moved to restricted funds. So on the next slide, when we get there, you'll see an increase in restricted certificated salaries. Classified salaries came in slightly higher than expected. That can be due to time cards, extra time, substitutes, overtime, or stipends. or stipends, vacancy stipends. Employee benefits decreased. That's pretty much in line with the certificated salaries moving over to restricted. So you'll see an increase on the other side as well. Books and supplies, materials and supplies, that's a decrease of about seven hundred and fifty thousand, mostly due to site and department budgets, not fully spending their, their budgets. So just a, a, a small savings there. Services and other operating contracts essentially, a decrease in about one point four million. We had a transportation contract that came in about a million dollars less than expected, as well as some departments and other contracts that came in less than expected. The other big changes there you'd see is indirect cost. About five hundred thousand dollars less than expected. That's due to less restricted expenditures as well. The indirect costs come from grants paying us to do normal operating costs, utilities, things like that. So with, when we switch over to the restricted side, you'll see less indirect costs as well. Interfund transfers, we had a general obligation bond that closed, and they are, they were holding some of our money in escrow. Once we closed that bond, they sent us that money back. It became revenue in Fund fifty-two for our debt services. And then we did a interfund transfer from fifty-two to Fund O one, and so you'll see it as a, a transfer on this line. So that's unrestricted. I've kind of gone into detail with each line. We'll go to the next slide, which is the graph of those, of those same numbers. You'll see that salary and benefits, which are certificated salaries, classified salaries, and the combination of benefits, a total up to eighty-two point nine percent of all of our unrestricted expenditures. Next slide. This is the restricted graph of our expenditures for, for unaudited actuals since estimated actuals since we last reported. You'll see that two point three million dollar increase in certificated salaries. That is the shifted salaries from unrestricted over to restricted. Classified salaries, also a slight increase, same reasoning for time cards, stipends, et cetera. Benefits, you'll see that increase there as well. Books and supplies was a decrease. We had a kitchen infrastructure project that was planned for twenty-three, twenty-four that changed over to twenty-four, twenty-five. So some of that is attributed to that, as well as site and department budgets that didn't get spent, or may have crossed over into twenty-four, twenty-five, and, and we'll see those expenditures next year. Services, same, same thing, contracts went down about three million since estimated actuals. A large number of these would be community schools or E L, E L O P contracts that may have been planned and didn't come to fruition, or were planned for summer school and didn't get charged until July. And since these books are as of six thirty, you may see some, some fluctuations, and those contracts may hit twenty-four, twenty-five. And that's, that's your expenditures for restricted side. We'll go to the next slide with the graph of those same numbers, and you'll see in the restricted side, sixty-two point nine percent of the expenditures are in salaries and benefits. So we'll go to the next slide. This is the combined. This is unrestricted and restricted combined expenditures. It's the same two charts just summed up. Each of those lines come in to about ten million dollars less in expenditures than expected on unrestricted and restricted combined. Next slide. And combined, that graph, seventy-three point eight percent of our total expenditures in general fund are salaries and benefits. Next slide, please. So this is the, this is kind of a summary of what I've just been talking about, the decrease in expenditures from unrestricted going over to restricted. We moved some salaries to an expiring E S R grant that we wanted to make sure we expended the funds before the grant expired. The decrease from restricted general books and supplies for that kitchen infrastructure project, as well as the unexpected savings from services such as insurance, department supply budgets, and contracts. Next slide. So now we'll go to the multi-year budget projection. This is the combined multi-year budget projection. Which is small on that screen up there. Okay, so you'll see that our revenues and expenditures, we are operating at a twenty-five million dollar deficit in combined unrestricted and restricted. Starting fund balance, one hundred and twenty-five million. Plus, the operating surplus would give us an ending fund balance of a hundred million. We will be doing a, a Fund seventeen transfer projected at eleven point five million for the unrestricted side. The next slide will show that and why we need it for a total projected and ending fund balance of a hundred and eleven million dollars. The breakdown of that can be seen below with a four million dollar assigned amount to offset the twenty-five, twenty-six Fund seventeen transfer. If all of these projections come true, there could be changes. We'll present at first interim some updated numbers and give you a better projection on these. So next slide for the unrestricted multi-year projection. Here you'll see that our revenues are expected to be three hundred and fifty-two point nine million. Expenditures in the two hundred and seventy-six million, which would give us a surplus of seventy-six point two million. However, two lines down, you'll see a contribution to restricted programs such as special ed and restrict, routine restricted maintenance is going to be expected to be ninety-four, ninety-two point four million. So even though we have a surplus of seventy-six million, we need to do a Fund seventeen transfer of eleven point five million just to, just to offset that ninety-two million dollar contribution to restricted programs. And even with that, we'll still be lowering our beginning balance from twenty-four point one million down to nineteen point five million, which would give us an ending fund balance of projected of four million dollars. And that's where that four million will then if it comes to fruition, will be applied to the Fund seventeen transfer in twenty-five, twenty-six. So at estimated actuals, we actually presented a Fund seventeen transfer of around twelve million dollars in twenty-five, twenty-six. But due to the increased fund balance in twenty-four, twenty-five projections, we've lowered the Fund seventeen contribution in twenty-five, twenty-six from our original estimates, and we'll update those again at first interim and come up with new numbers for you. Next slide. So this is the twenty-three, twenty-four contributions from unrestricted general fund. You'll see here the special education contribution was eighty-six point two million. Routine restricted maintenance and, and other funds had a ten point six million dollar net contribution totaling an unrestricted contribution of ninety-six point eight million dollars. So if you remember from the previous slide, we're projecting a ninety-two million dollar contribution in twenty-four, twenty-five. Our contribution in twenty-three, twenty-four was ninety-six point eight. Those numbers can fluctuate. We'll, we'll have updated projections at first interim. Next slide. So the next steps, we have external auditors that will come in and audit all of our financials from the unaudited actuals and give their opinion on regulations and how, how we did. We're hoping that their opinion, in quotes here, in, in our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respect to financial position of the government activities, each major fund and the aggregate remaining fund information of the district as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So we're hoping that's what the auditors will say. And then business services is currently prepping for first interim reporting, which will be presented in December of twenty twenty-four for the first quarter of the twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Next slide. And with that, I will ask if there's any questions, or if Kim would like to say anything.
Thank you so very much. Board, we're going to do three questions and two-minute comments. Does anyone have? First, let's go to public comment. Thank you. Thank you so much, friends. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions? Mr. Wilson, we're going to go to you, the student, the, Mr. Espinoza Junior, and then we'll swing back around. So, Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So I have two questions. So first, given the current trend of funding reductions across various programs and initiatives, I would like to understand more why classified salaries appear to be one of the few areas receiving more funding than its estimated cost in the unrestricted general fund expenditures.
I can take that one. Thank you for the question. I'm just looking for a sheet. So you're speaking about reduction in classified staffing, but what I actually believe to be true. Sorry, I should have been reading. Okay, so if we look at the restricted and unrestricted expenditures, which are slides for twelve and fourteen, what we actually see is there's an increase in the amount we are expending on classified salaries. So there doesn't seem to be a trend of reductions in how much we're paying out in those salaries. But we do recognize that there are contracts covering vacancies in those areas. So I'm not sure if that what is more what the concern is related to.
I was more concerned of the reduction of, of other areas aside from the classified salaries.
So the reduction, it's not a reduction, it's, it's estimated actuals is our projection of what we think the year will end at. We're kind of estimating or guesstimating on trends. At unaudited actuals, that column there that we're comparing to is what the funds, what the expenditures actually came in at. So we projected a higher number, they came in a little lower. And so the comparison there is just from April thirtieth to June thirtieth. From what we present, what we presented at estimated actuals to what actually ended up happening on June thirtieth.
I'm sorry, Mr. Carter. I think Mr. Wilson's question was why did we spend more on classified compared to everywhere else when we were cutting? Was that your question, Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Maybe that clarifies it. Why did we spend more in classified compared to other, other areas of the budget?
Okay, that makes sense. I'll give an answer, and then I'll invite Jeff to add to the answer if he would like. We have a number of vacancies in the area of classified positions, which means that our current employees would would likely be covering some of that work with overtime, extra time, and vacancy stipends in some cases. However, at the same time, because those salaries are vacant, they are being moved out of our interim projections. So we be, we're in a state of using contractors to fill some of those classified vacancies, especially in the area of special education. So that salary money is moved out during our interims and over to contracts to pay for the contractors that come in to cover the vacancies. So I'll ask Jeff if he has anything to add to that, but I would assume that those increases are due to time cards that we can't accurately predict because we don't know exactly what's being covered through time cards, extra time, and vacancy stipends, and what's being pulled to cover the contracts of the contractors we bring in.
Yeah, and, and at the end of the year, a lot of people turn in time cards and extra time and, and say, hey, I didn't get this from February. And so we project based on trends as of April thirtieth, what we think it's going to come into, and then in May and June, they may turn in more than we expected or above the average for the rest of the year if they were holding them back, or if during the workflow, things hadn't gotten paid and signed off on yet. So in those final two months, sometimes expenditures come in higher than we expected.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. And a final question. I'm aware that a timeline change in the planned kitchen infrastructure project is responsible for nearly a third percent decrease in the restrictive general funds for books and supplies. I'm curious if there's any strategies in place to ensure that students' access to books and supplies remain unaffected during this transition.
So the, there are separate resources that we place all of the, the allocations and budgets for separate departments. So the money that has not been used for the kitchen infrastructure project, or has been put on hold for a while, is stipulated to be used only on the kitchen. And also, student materials and supplies are stipulated in accounts that are related to direct student services such as site, materials and supplies accounts, and department materials and supplies account. So the kitchen infrastructure program does not have an impact on the level of funding supplies for students. So they're separate, and we are in a place right now where we're giving departments and sites monies to purchase materials and supplies. And even though we feel like they are purchasing what's needed, they're not spending all of their money, and that's why there's money left over in those accounts. Because we give it to them to use, and it doesn't get used.
Okay. I, I guess I was curious because I saw on the slideshow there it says a decrease in the restricted general fund book and supplies category reflects a timeline change in the planned kitchen infrastructure projects. I was worried about those funds in terms of getting the books and supplies.
So that timeline for the kitchen rebuild doesn't doesn't coincide with any money or plans for stu, for materials and supplies. We operate on what's called a S A X account code structure. And the S A X account code structure lumps things into number categories. So even though the kitchen infrastructure money is sitting in materials and supplies when that project starts, that money is actually going to be moved into different accounts to pay for the remodel. So the fact that that large balance is landing in that account, it's landing in an umbrella account because until the remodel starts, they don't know how much to move for the architects, how much to move for the construction, how much to move for the equipment. So it's all in the equipment fund until they find out what the true budget is for the kitchen remodel. So it's a bit, it's a little tricky that it's sitting there, and it looks like it's a part of how we fund materials and supplies for students, but that, those dollars specifically are materials and supplies for a remodel of the central kitchen building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Espinoza Junior, did you have questions?
Yes, I do. So forgive me if I sound silly. I'm still, you know, trying to learn all this, a lot of numbers. So my first question is, will we see any possible cuts for sports programs? If so, which programs specifically? Because I have been hearing anticipation from people that are coming from schools such as Pinot Valley High School and before that, prior to that, Hercules High School. And prior to this meeting, I discovered that Elsarito High School as well, specifically for the aquatics and swimming team. So that leads me to my first question, which I'll repeat again. Will we see cuts for sports programs? If so, which program specifically? And how significant will the cuts be if those cuts are in place, and what will be leftover funds be placed into?
First of all, that's great. You stacked the question, but I'll allow it. Do you know what stack a question means? Stack a question means like you put a who, what, when, where, and how all in one question, but I think it's fine. We're going to let it happen. Dr. Moses, do you need trustee Espinoza Junior to repeat the question, or you got it? All right, go ahead.
Thank you for the question. It's a question I actually got, this is the third time I've got that question today, which, and it's interesting. I believe there is fear as we talk about our need to reduce expenditures. I think that there's a natural fear that it's going to impact sports. We have had zero conversation about reducing sports. So there is not a conversation, a discussion, or a plan at this point to impact any of the sports programs. We are in the early stages of trying to identify the process and the program services and staffing that are going to be brought forward for discussion for reduction. So what I'd say is that's probably going to be a question you'll ask in the coming months. But at this point, I can assure you that there is no discussion of cutting ath, athletics at any of our schools by the cabinet or otherwise.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You have another question, or is that it?
No, that's all my questions.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to swing back around. Trustee Christian, did you have any questions?
Yes, ju, just one question.
Go ahead.
You know,
You know, with all of this, you know, being said, you know, have we looked at ways how we can bring in more revenue or looking at innovative, innovative ways to do things?
Thank you for the question. We're always looking to add more revenue to the district and innovate so that we can provide more services for our students. I think one of the things that it's important to lift up as we look at how we've concluded fiscal year 2024 is that we have lots of opportunity within our budget, but we also do have lots of accountability within the budget. And that we do have to, when we look at our bottom line, look at our operating budget separated, separate from our restricted budget. We're bringing in revenue to provide additional services for students and that's happening often through grants, through funders, through benefactors. Where we really are not able to generate consistent increased revenue is on that on that unrestricted side of the house where we have to pay for the salaries and the base programs within our district. That really can only be generated through enrollment and ADA. So your original question was, what are we doing to try to increase that? We're working really hard to build our programs and to remain, to keep our programs intact so that we can attract more families. We're also through some of our other departments, really trying to focus on increasing the attendance, addressing the needs of students who are experiencing chronic absenteeism and working with our site leaders to ensure that everybody is aware that we all need to do what we can to recapture students who may not be attending school every day. Those are the things that are within our control to increase revenue on the operation budget. And so we are constantly focused on that because we know that is a game changer in terms of how our multi-year projections look. I know that under the direction of Dr. Hurst in the cabinet, it is a concern and a constant source of discussion on how we can improve those numbers. So we'll keep working at it. But really, that is the only avenue to having more revenue year over year to improve this budget outlook.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. What's the reason that the kitchen remodel is being pushed out?
Thank you for the question. Director Barbara Jellison was working very closely with our maintenance and facilities department to get this program off the ground this year. The, they had an architect and a vendor and we were starting to implement the project and I'm trying to remember this from memory, so I'm hoping that I get all of the facts right, but I do know that it had to do with the new requirements for how we need to install, I believe it's refrigeration units. The vendor that we were working with did not want to or did not believe they needed to increase to meet the new standards that are being rolled out in the next year or two. And the staff was not successful in getting that vendor on board with doing what needed to be done to bring the project up to specs. Because the vendor was not cooperative, the team in the end decided to find a new vendor, which meant that they needed to start again, the project. They are, I haven't checked recently because I was working directly with associate superintendent Freeze and Barbara Jellison on this project and with a recent transition, I haven't gotten an update. But I do believe they have identified a new contractor and they are working to create a new timeline so that that program project can get off the ground and moving for this year.
Would it be okay if we asked Ms. Payne if she has anything else to add to that?
Ms. Payne, you, if you can hear me, do you have anything else to add to trustee Reckless? Oh, wait, you're right there in front of me. I thought you were only saying, I'm a hot mess. Sorry, Ms. Payne.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I just want to expand on what Dr. Moses shared. That's absolutely right. So as part of the Clean Air Act, there, we are phasing out, the EPA is phasing out ozone depleting substances, which are commonly found in our air conditioners and our refrigeration equipment. And so in putting together the plans and specs for the central kitchen modernization, we thought it was really important that the refrigerant system that we're using at the central kitchen be ahead of these standards, right? So that the value of the project can extend its longest useful life. And so we did change kitchen consultants, that the architect has remained the same, but we have a special consultant that focuses specifically on kitchen. And so they are on board, the project is moving forward. And we'd be happy to provide some more details about the project in an upcoming Friday memo.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then I think this is from Mr. Carter. So I asked some questions about this earlier, but I just did not have a chance to look at it. So this kind of pickup, this six point six million plus in revenue and the minus ten million in expenses, it did roll into the NYPD and it rolled in, in Fund Seventeen transfers. So in year two, twenty-five to twenty-six, it looks like you're decreasing that contribution by like four million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, that four million dollars in the current projected expenditures and revenues of twenty-four, twenty-five would leave an additional four million dollars in the fund balance. We applied that as an assigned amount in twenty-four, twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six to reduce the Fund Seventeen contribution.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. And then finally, United Teachers of Richmond tonight was talking about fifty million dollars. And then there was an email that went out that was talking about a hundred and eleven million. So that, that they think is a hundred and sixty-two million, I'm sorry, a hundred and sixty-two million in reserves. So can you address that? Because we have a budget picture, which is obviously not that rosy. But yet there are some other statements being made about funds being available. So would you be able to address that, please?
Yeah, of course. Thank you for the question. That hundred and sixty-two million dollars breaks down into a few different categories. One hundred and one million of that is in restricted funds. So there are grants and donations that come with very strict allowable uses of that money. And we are doing everything we can to spend it, but there are restrictions on it. So a hundred and one million of dollars of that falls into that category. Thirty-seven million of that falls into Fund Seventeen, which you'll see over the next three years, we are spending down. And then the remaining amount is twenty-four point two-ish million. That is our unrestricted fund balance. When you take the three percent required reserve that we, we must hold, that equals sixteen million dollars in twenty-three, twenty-four, that leaves us with about eight million. It, it, it's really seven point seven million dollars that is in our unrestricted fund balance. In that seven point seven million dollars is the one point five million dollar carryover for LCAP that we reported in the LCAP plan. So, so truly the leftover amount is what we're putting into the fund balance and then we're carrying over into twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Loy, your questions?
Thank you, President. Dr. Moses, Mr. Carter, thanks so much for the presentation. I have three questions and I'm not sure if it's for you or Mr. Fleishman, but they're on our special education program. First one is, how much of our total budget do we spend on our special education services?
Thank you for the question, clerk. We spent about, is that including our federal fund allocation and our contribution? Is that the question?
Yes, yes, the whole, the whole contribution for spend.
It was about a hundred and ten million dollars last year.
Thank you. And how much is the federal government contributing for special education services?
About twenty-four million dollars.
Thank you. And how much was our contribution prior to the COVID pandemic hitting us?
I don't have that data in front of me, but our CBO, Dr. Moses, last night mentioned it was roughly around fifty to fifty-five million dollars in the, in the most recent years prior to COVID. Obviously, go back further and further, it'll be less and less, but about fifty-five million dollars before COVID.
Thank you, Mr. Fleishman. President, I'm done with my questions.
Thank you so very much. The questions that I have are for the general community to understand the budget. And it's just starting off simply with definitions. Can you please define what's restricted and what's unrestricted? What does it mean when we're talking about a budget?
Yeah, so unrestricted is money that we receive that we can spend less restrictive. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's our resources from zero, 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 zero to one, nine, nine, nine. EPA, unrestricted lottery, LCFF. We can, we can, there's still restrictions, there still has to be under guidelines, but we can generally spend it how we need to. Restricted resources are two thousand plus. And those ones come with grants or allowable ability or list of allowable uses that we must follow or they will come in and take the money back. So there are a narrow set of windows that we can use that money on and we, anywhere we're spending that type of position or contract or service or material supply, we move over to restricted funds first. We want to spend that down first. If, if we don't have allowable uses that can go into it, then we must put it on the unrestricted side. I don't know if Kim wants to add.
Yes, I think I'll add, first, the, the overall umbrella of any dollar that comes into our district is every dollar we spend has to have an educational purpose. On the unrestricted side, that is the money that our district decides we use to staff our classrooms, provide the basic services to our students based upon what we decide our plan is and our program is and how we pay staff that are required and services that are required of us as an LEA. Unrestricted funds are tied to programs, plans and initiatives that come from the state and federal government level. An example of an, of a restricted resource would be, we have a new resource, that's the literacy coaches initiative. The state has given us, I don't know the exact amount.
Four million.
Three hundred.
Three point four million.
Three point four million dollars to provide coaches at specific schools that they have selected in order to ensure that there's a literacy, literacy coach in those schools that they have pinned as an underperforming school for literacy. That's an example of what we encounter with our restricted funds. They come with directions, rules and plans that outline how we expend those dollars.
And this may be an obvious question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. If you have restricted funds and you do something that's outside of, I gave you five dollars to go to the mall and buy blue jeans, you went to the mall with the five dollars and bought ice cream. If we do something like that with restricted funds, what's the consequence?
So if we are not following the rules of allowable ability for the restricted funds that come into our district, we can be fined, we can't, the money can be taken back and they can even take further funds. For example, if we were to take the money, the three point four million that they've just given us, given us for literacy coaches and we decide as a district, we're going to use it instead for school community outreach workers, well, that would come up in an audit, that would come up in our quarterly reports and the state would say you're not doing what you said, that what we said you had to do with this money, you're going to give us that three point four million dollars back and we're further going to give you a a penalty for not following the rules. What then happens is anything we've spent on that grant, we know, we now have to find general fund monies to cover that because the grant has been now denied. The other piece of that is grants, sometimes they're not fully funded. Learning recovery, they took a portion of that back last year. So they said, hey, you know, our budget has changed, give us five million dollars back. But it's a multi-year grant and so they were able to do that because they knew there would be money in the balance that they could retrieve. So in that way, restricted funds are tricky because there are consequences if you don't follow the rules and there are also no solid promises that you are going to get every penny that they've promised.
Thank you very much. Thank you, community, for bearing with me. School budgets are complicated. So I think we need to break them down little bit by little bit. Okay, board. CBO Moses, thank you to your staff and to yourself for the presentation. Board, thank you for the questions. We are in, oh, we need approval. Okay, can I get a motion, please?
President, I'll make a motion that we approve of the unadded actuals.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian, and thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Loy. We're now moving to comments. Do we have any comments? All right, let's put two minutes on the clock. Comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Great, thank you very much. First, to trustee Wilson. So just the four thousand category of books and supplies, really, it's the junk drawer of, of the, it's like, you never know what's really going to be in there. It's books, it's supplies, it's custodial supplies. There was S R funds in there. There was like, who knows, I can't believe the state lets you do that, but books and supplies, it's kind of like a little bit of a misnomer and you have to dig deep as to what may be in that account. So just for, I can show you a few things about how this accounting system works if you want to. If you want to contact me, we can have a little session, but just, yeah. Four thousand books and supplies, you never know what you're going to find in there. The other thing is the kitchen remodel, so I just hope that happens quickly because if you've been there and you've seen how many meals they push out of there and the condition of that facility. I mean, I'm glad we stopped, but they, they need, they need a remodel really bad. And then just my, my friendly reminder on enrollment. So it is true that enrollment across the state and across the nation is declining, except for right here, right now. And there are more kids here in the WCC USD jurisdiction. There's actually seven point eight percent more kids here in the, in the jurisdiction between twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen to twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four. That's just public and charter schools. The enrollment has shifted. I don't know what's out there that's gone to private and what's homeschooled and what's left the district, but there's plenty of kids there and it's a, it really is a marketing issue and getting people to choose WCC USD. And I think that is all I have. Thank you very much for the presentation and delighted somewhat to see, you know, a decrease in what will be transferred in future years. Thank you. Hopefully transferred.
Clerk Gonzalez-Loy, go ahead.
Thank you, President. Again, thank you so much to you and your staff, Dr. Moses, for everything you're doing around our budget. For anyone interested, we had a budget committee meeting last night. We actually spent two and a half hours looking at these numbers and discussing them. So it's very informative and educational if you would like to to watch that meeting through our YouTube channel. We also have two additional, three additional budget meetings this fall, October twenty-second, November nineteenth and December seventeenth at the Ansah High School at six thirty. We also have a Zoom option. We go into detail about all these numbers. I did want to make two, two points. One, the reason I asked about sped, I asked about it yesterday is because I want the community to understand that our sped services are critical and they're very important. Actually, we have seen, as Mr. Fleishman pointed out last night, an increase of students who are enrolling into our special education program, which is kudos to us, but also it increases how much we are spending in that area. And just since COVID, we have doubled the amount that we're spending in, in special education, yet the federal government gives us a sixth of how much we spend, right? Even though they should be funding the whole thing. And that is adding to our budgetary issue. Although we, we have to provide those services and it's one of the things that I think we're proud that we provide services. But it's obviously affecting that. I also want to say that we don't have overstaffed schools. So when we talk about cuts this year specifically, our schools are in huge need. All of our schools are in huge need as we visit them and we're here. So if we do have to cut, we have to do cuts outside of schools and outside of staffing that works with our students. So I, you know, when come time comes, I won't be voting for anything that would cut those services because because we have to do something outside of that, because we're starving our schools because of outside factors, right? So I just wanna make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. I did want to say that, I wanted to repeat what you said about the budget committee meeting. Those are some of the most informative sessions to learn, and it, it's a space to where you can ask a lot of questions. So if you do have a chance to go to a budget subcommittee meeting, I would highly recommend you go. We have our CBO and her staff is there. The, um, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy runs the meeting. He's there because he's the, the head of that meeting. The superintendent is there, and then cabinet comes in. And they, they speak to the questions that you may have, but more importantly, we also have labor there. So we have representation from all five of our labor unions, and it's a time to have a discussion about the numbers, to have a discussion about, because your budget is your value. So that's how you look at a budget. Your budget is what you think is the most important, and you spend from that, right? It's like a house, it's a house budget. Your parents, when they look at the budget, they're like, look, we gotta have a roof. They need to have electricity, and then they need to have food, right? And then everything else comes after that. So that's kinda how it is with the school budget, but I highly encourage people to go to, and everybody listening, please go to the budget subcommittee meetings because it gives you a real understanding of school budgets, which is one of the most complicated budgets, I think, that there, there is out there. We're working with over five hundred million dollars. And we have to run a huge district, and that sounds like a huge number, but then it comes down to it, and we are like, what, how are we finding seven million, right? What do we have to do to find seven million dollars this year? That's what our goal is. We have to find seven billion dollars this year to cut, because we don't have the money. And then we have to maintain that seven million next year. And then that, something else happens. If I keep going, I'm gonna be wrong. But it's one of those things that, that's, you learn from the budget committee. So again, I advise everybody to go to the budget committee. Here's the other thing, Dr. Moses is a really good teacher. I know it doesn't sound like it now, because I don't know what I was saying, but I wrote it down. She is a really good teacher, and, um, she scaffolds to where you are. So if you don't know what restricted and unrestricted is, she'll tell you, and then she'll build you from there. Okay, so now let's look at this money and let's do some math and subtraction. Anyway, I could go on and on, but I won't. So that's, O three, you have something to say, friend? Go ahead. Oh, well, I didn't know, because I was over here and then looking over here. Go ahead, friend. I'm complete. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, I know I mentioned earlier, you know, about being innovative. Uh, um, um, and then I know you mentioned in, in there, uh, how, you know, the student, uh, attendance and, you know, everything is based on ADA, you know, attendance, so forth. And, um, how can, you know, and, and, and when I'm looking at is, how can we become more attractive? Because all of our schools, high schools, have specialties. And we have to, you know, like, build up the interest, you know, the excitement about, um, uh, otherwise, we open our schools up, you know, to all the students so they can understand, you know, they can maybe, uh, take a course over here at this school based on, um, uh, you know, something they like. So I was just looking at how can we become more innovative? And, and, and if we become more innovative and attractive and, and do things differently, maybe we can gain some, we won't lose no more students out of the district, they're going other places. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Christian. Okay, anyone else? Nope. All right, we're moving on to F one. F one, these are our.
President Smith, I'm sorry, we have to do the votes.
Of course we do, just flew right on past it. Sorry about that, friend. All right, let's go to the vote. All right, we are headed to the vote. Trustee Wilson, your vote, please, sir.
Sustain.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Now we are moving on to our discussion items. F one, resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, twenty-four. The matter of supporting the district's community school transformation strategy. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, this is your item. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, President. Board, um, tonight, we are bringing, the President and I are actually bringing three items from the Governance Committee. Um, you asked us to put them in discussion, so that's what we are doing. Um, so we can hear your thoughts on three different resolutions, um, that we have looked at in committee, and then we will take action at the next meeting. Um, the three policies that we're looking at is, um, as the President mentioned, the first one is around community schools, the second is on suicide prevention, and the third is on menstrual equity. Um, I wanted to just make a couple of, staff is actually prepared to talk a little bit about each one, but I wanted to just mention that we've, we've spent a couple of months on each. Uh, there is reason why we chose the language that we chose. Um, and if you have questions, we'd be happy to take it. If we need to make, create changes, uh, we'll probably send it back to committee one more time, uh, to them bring for action, to see if we can incorporate what you are asking us to incorporate. Um, but two things that I did wanna clarify, uh, we heard tonight from, um, our wonderful UTR president about the community schools resolution and how it had contingency language. Uh, I did clarify it with him that, um, that's not the intent of the language, uh, nor does it, uh, specifically say contingency. What it says is that we are committing to having community schools moving forward as a school district. So in the third year, when the grant is supposed to end from the state, it's going to be our work to find that funding so that it continues. So the intent is that community schools will move forward, no matter what the state chooses to do. Community schools, um, directors and organizers are gonna be in our schools, hopefully forever, because part of our vision. Um, so the intention of the language, not that if the grant doesn't continue, that that won't, um, uh, that they won't continue. It's more of that we are going to work on finding where the funding would come from if the grant is discontinued. So I just wanna clarify that piece. And then two, on the third policy, on menstrual equity, um, we did hear a public comment about, uh, the machines that are be, being installed at schools. The reason why they're not called out? Receptacles, thank you, Trustee Reckler, receptacles. Uh, I couldn't remember the right word. Um, they are already installed in, uh, most schools, as we're gonna hear from Ms. Payne. They are not called out on the resolution because they're already part of the law. So, um, I think the intention was not to put it there because it's already happening. So I just wanted to clarify why that is not, uh, part of the resolution, but Ms. Payne can probably talk a little bit more, uh, uh, about that. Okay, and I think that's it, President. Anything else you wanted to add about the, about the resolutions before we pass it on to staff to talk, uh, briefly talk about each one?
No, um, because we have to have public comment after each one, let's take them one at a time, just to make sure that we get that public comment in for that item. So if we're just looking at item, uh, F one, the matter of supporting the district's community school transformation strategy. Ms. Sigler, do you have anything to add before I call for public comment?
Yeah, just a couple of points. Um, one thing to echo what our labor partners said and what Clerk Gon, Gonzalez-Hoy shared. We really wanna celebrate that we've been a leader in the state with this work. We actually began in two thousand and seven with the establishment of health and wellness centers uh, at each comprehensive high school, as well as mobile health clinics. And by two thousand and eleven, we were actually creating the city and county-wide partnerships to support and sustain the work. When we think about the transition in the last three years of the community schools grant, we've really shifted away from just health and wellness to a holistic look at how we engage students, the community, families across our campuses. And we really think about how services are integrated. And so this strategy really lives inside classrooms, in the hallways, in our parent meetings, um, and throughout the community. And that's an important distinction when we think about the work moving forward. And it's something that we look forward to building on and continuing to improve our practice. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Allison Huey, please unmute yourself.
Good evening, um, trustees and staff, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak on this very important item. And again, thank you so much for your work on this item. Just a clarification, um, my comment earlier was not necessarily about the, the, this, the, the dispensers of the products, which is amazing and lovely, and I understand it's part of the legislation. What's not necessarily part of the legislation and what is not clear in our resolution is the necessary receptacles for the used products that needs to happen in every bathroom stall in every school, at every grade level. Many of our lower grade levels do not have the appropriate disposal, um, receptacles in bathroom stalls so that students can take care of appropriate hygienic needs. Um, and that, that, that was the biggest, um, request that I had. So I, I, I think that if we only focus on.
Thank you very much, board. We are now going to questions. Does anybody have any questions about F one, resolution number two, four, two, five, dash, twenty-four? The resolution in the matter of supporting the district's community school transformation strategy. Board, any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead. Remember, we're doing three questions and two-minute comments if we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So first, I'm a hu, I'm a huge proponent of community schools, so I just wanna state that. But I'm gonna ask some questions that people might think I'm not, but it's just wanna make sure that I state that. So I'm trying to really understand what identifying future funding to support at least, but not limited to, you know, the, the, the list here. Um, and that adds up to about five point five million dollars per year, or that would add up to about five point five million dollars roughly. So could I, could I understand what, um, identifying future funding means?
So one thing that's really exciting is we're part of actually a two-year planning grant in combination with our county office, looking at sustainable funding. And I don't wanna speak too much ahead of the planning that they're doing, um, but I'll look forward to bringing back more comprehensive information.
And President, I can add a couple of things to you, allow me. Um, since the grant technically sunsets in two years, then it would be our work to find those five point five million if the state does not continue to provide us that funding. That's practically what that's saying.
And, um, so like, what sources would be available? Would, would five point five million dollars from LCAP uh, support this program and five point five million dollars of other LCAP go away?
Dr. Moses, could you?
I think LCAP would be a great resource to use to retain the program, but you are right. Unless we have an increase in ADA or an increase in our unduplicated count to increase the LCFF revenue, we would need to identify expenditures to move out of LCAP in order to prioritize the expenditures for community schools.
And then finally, if some money materializes, a million dollars, two million dollars, whatever, how does that get allocated or like, what's the, what would be the process to figure out, you know, where that would go?
Well, the work would start, um, with developing an LCAP plan that prioritizes community schools as one of the major strategies to support our unduplicated count. Once the plan was written, um, then the combination of educational services, state and federal, um, staff and, um, input from stakeholders, including the DLCAPS committee, would have to identify where it goes in the plan. But it would have to be a collaborative discussion and a plan created, and then we would follow that plan to retain this and prioritize this program.
Okay, thank you. I just have some comments at the end.
Thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none, we'll move to two-minute comments. If we could get two minutes on the clock. I know Trustee Reckler has comments. Anyone on this side have comments? Mr. Wilson has comments. Okay, Mr. Wilson, we'll start with you.
I would just like to quickly mention that I recently took part in a video created by former student trustee Lola that was shown at the California State, um, Board of Education in favor of every school in California becoming a community school. So I am in high support of this matter.
Thank you so much, Trustee Wilson. Anyone else on this side? Okay, now I'm gonna move over to this side. Trustee Reckler, you had a comment?
I did. So, once again, I really support community schools. I've seen the work. I believe in the work. Where I have concern is in a district that is fiscally fragile. I don't believe that there is the luxury to lock down dollars that can't be moved or may not materialize or may, you know, other really big things might need to get sacrificed. I don't, I don't have an answer to this, but that's my concern. Um, and, and to be careful with the language and what's written so that there is flexibility. I mean, I don't have a problem with going to the county and going to state and looking for philanthropy, but I, I just wanna make sure that there's, um, flexibility and, um, the district isn't, uh, you know, tied to something that might be, you know, fiscally, um, you know, really challenging.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I first wanna thank the community schools support collaborative for helping us, uh, not just write this resolution, but, uh, you know, really integrate community schools into the work that we're doing. Um, I wanna thank, uh, Ms. Sigler and her department for doing, leading this work as well. Um, definitely, you know, Trustee Reckler's concerns, um, were brought up at the committee. Um, and we definitely, you know, had a discussion about that. Uh, and I understand, um, where that feeling is coming from, so I, I can relate. But I think at the end of the day, we always say that our budget is a reflection of our values. Um, and I think that everyone on this board, and I think in this community, especially, you know, the people behind doing this work, believe community schools is essential as part of our values. So I think that at some point, we gotta put, you know, our name on the sand and say, this is one of the things that we just always ensure that our schools have, right? Like a teacher, a principal, custodian staff, right? Uh, a CSS and a community schools director, right? Like, that is the package that will always be there, no matter what kind of situation we're dealing with. Um, and I think that that's where this resolution fits, is that we are putting our, our name on the sand, but to say, this is what we stand for, this is our district. Because community schools is ultimately a strategy to hopefully bring more students back to our district, to be able to move and be innovative, like Trustee Christian said, uh, about our schools. Because ultimately, they are supposed to be doing the work with families and the engagement that we all hope actually is happening, right? Do we need to do a little bit more? Yes. Um, and I think that we're still figuring out what that work looks like in the middle of, obviously, our, our, our financial problems. So, um, I just wanna share that real quick. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. Dr. Hurst, I think that one of the things that we are hearing is, and that you have, uh, been a proponent of, is that we are moving to be a community school district. I think just like we are moving to be an anti-racist district, just like we are moving to be a home for newcomers, just like we are moving to several other initiatives that fall under the umbrella of the strategic plan. To Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy's point, we have to put our money where our mouth is. And that's gonna be strange a little bit, and uncomfortable a little bit, and new a little bit. But I think that with the cabinet that you have and with the, um, partners that we bring into this and continue to mold around the idea of community schools, I think that everything kind of falls under the same umbrella, right? I think the strategic plan falls under community schools. I think that LCAP falls under community schools. I think that there's an alignment. I think that anti-racism falls under. I think that there's an alignment. I think that anti-racism falls under there. There's an alignment with bringing our parents back to the, the school, right? Back into the school and back into the understanding. I think that we need a lot more education around community schools and what um, we want it to look like in WCCUSD and how we are ensuring that that comes to full fruition. So I think that that's where we need to move to. All right, Board, thank you so very much. We do not need a vote on that because that is just a discussion item. We are now moving to discussion item F2, which is the revised Board Policy fifty-one forty-one dot fifty-two on suicide prevention. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you. I actually don't have much to add. Um, so I'll pass it on to uh, Ms. Sigler. Thank you.
Ms. Sigler, do you have anything to add?
Yes, um, thank you for the attention to this critical item. This is actually a revision of an existing policy um, and a revision to bring it up-to-date to latest standard and to ensure that there's readability and that it meets readability standards. Uh, I know you all read through this policy and read that a shocking seventeen percent of teens uh, have had suicidal ideation. And so I know that as a district, we believe that the physical and emotional safety of our students is critical. And most of this policy really focuses on how we're training staff to recognize signs of suicidal ideation and ensure that students have access to services, be it on or off campus, who to notify, how to act. Uh, the policy does ensure that we are poised as a district to act quickly and that we are aligned to best practice. Uh, and it has been revised to ensure that we both understand prevention and what's referred to throughout the policy as postvention uh, in the unfortunate cases where students have attempted harm and we need to intervene in that way. And this is a brutally hard topic that's far too close to home for many of us, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do we have any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. So how does this policy show up in school sites? And uh, you know, yeah, adult, both adults and kids.
Yes, so I think the first thing is it really outlines annual training. Uh, and I know there's already planning going around right now on my team for how to get that training to staff this school year as soon as possible. I think once you have training, the way a policy lives with staff is in what we do when we suspect students are in crisis. First of all, what I would hope is that it means that we have adults who are poised to catch small signs before they become large and get students in front of professionals who really can do the assessments and dig in deeply to understand what their needs are. And sometimes our students show up loudly needing intervention and support and that they understand exactly how to act.
Okay, and it, and it now complies with all current uh, law? I know that something was passed not terribly long ago that everybody has to update, and then there has to be an update every five years or something like that. So we're now in compliance and?
Yes, we are, and it's been thoroughly vetted by our legal team.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Ms. Sigler, readability means that, just correct me if I'm wrong, readability means it needs to be written and be able to be understood at an eighth-grade level. Is that accurate?
I will double-check. My understanding was a sixth-grade level.
Sixth grade, okay. Thank you very much. Um, and that's the changes that we see in this policy, correct?
That's many of the language changes that you see, yes.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions. I have comments, but that's it. Thank you. Board, do we have any comments? Go ahead, Mr. Espinoza Jr.
Thank you. So uh, reading over this revised policy, um, it's great. First of all, thank you for putting this out. Um, it's not only presenting it to the board because it's a very crucial issue, but one thing that I do notice is that the common pattern that we see in terms of before the death of people, specifically students who commit suicide, the signs are most obvious in between messages and internal conversations with their closest friends. So something I can just throw out there or suggest is that maybe not only teaching kids to report possible signs that they noticed, but also like how to handle that internally as well. Because a lot of times, um, it has happened. I've witnessed it. And it can be detrimental to not only the family of the students who do commit suicide, but also the friends that they leave behind.
Thank you for bringing that up. We know that students often are the first line of defense when their friends are in distress and that their friends intervening is actually life-saving. We do encourage that students do not try to become a mental health professional for their friends, but they report to a trusted adult who can get professional support to the students. Our friendships are critical, but our teens should not be asked or put the burden on themselves to, to save the mental health of their friends. They need to bring adults into the equation. Thank you.
Any, any other comments? Trustee Reckler, you have a comment?
Yeah, just I, I, I hope to see this in action thoughtfully, you know, really quickly. Um, I don't know about anybody else, but I certainly have been touched by it and it's just it's just horrible. It's horrible. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I have a comment. I think Mr. Espinoza Jr. hit on something that I didn't think about. When we had this discussion in governance, we were talking about educating parents to see signs, but I did not even think about educating our students to see signs in their friends or their siblings or their cousins or, I think that education is key. So educating our entire community, from our teachers to our um, our staff, our support staff at school, to our students, to also the parents about seeing the signs, because then it's that, putting that weight on preventative and also understanding the whole impact to the community when something so devastating happens. Thank you for that. So I would, I know that um, Mr. Booker showed me that the numbers on the back of your student IDs, the student pre- suicide prevention um, numbers on the back of your student IDs. But what we talked about in governance is having it on the board at school, the whiteboard, like when you go into a teacher's classroom, to make sure that we're adding that access to help, right? To give as many pathways to help as we possibly can for all of our students. But I really value that comment that you made about including how do we educate each other, peer-to-peer education about suicide. Okay, thank you very much. Um, we are now moving to act, discussion item F3, approval of the new board policy three, thirty-five seventeen dot one menstrual equity, equity. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, I call this period poverty, but that's not the right word, but menstrual equity. But go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President. Um, I'll let Ms. Payne explain, she did such a beautiful job at governance. But I just wanted to add, I want to say thank you to you because you brought this to us even before, you know, we had to ma- change things because of the law. So I want to say thank you, um, because it's a really important topic. So, uh, but I'll pass it on to Ms. Payne.
Well, I'm innovative and brilliant, France. There you go.
And if uh, and if Ms. Payne, you could also address the public comment that we heard about um, the disposal. Uh, I'd appreciate it. I know we talked about it in governance, so I'll let you do that. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to start tonight by introducing this proposed policy um, by reading a quote from an eighth grader. "Menstrual equity to me means that menstruation is treated just as any other healthcare issue should be treated with respect and support. It's a healthcare issue, the same as supplying soap or toilet paper. Having menstrual supplies should not be a luxury. It should be a right that everyone, no matter the situation, has." And I don't know if there's a better way to introduce something that's so critical. Um, we had a great conversation at governance about um, not only ensuring that we're complying with um, the law, um, which the board policy very closely aligns with, but also recognizing what's at the core of um, this policy and, and truly the law. And that's um, providing basic healthcare um, support for our students and our staff um, at our sites. And so with that, I'll share a couple of key points of the policy. Um, there's two major requirements. It's about providing supplies and providing notices in all of the restrooms to make sure that everyone's aware of the right and understands who they can reach out to at the site if they need additional supplies. That really um, triggered conversations with leadership about how we can go above and beyond what is simply required to ensure that everyone has what they need. Um, and so we believe that part of the successful implementation of a critical policy like this is really partnering with the sites and leading with the why and providing education to our students, our staff, our communities to really understand um, what is available, how we can continue to support um, and how we can really partner with this. Um, this is a requirement. Um, one of the new um, components of this legislation is that this will ne- now be part of all of our annual facilities inspections to ensure that we not only have the dispensers, the signage and the supplies, um, but that we're maintaining that and continuing to provide that. Um, one of the other things that we talked a little bit about is the types of supplies and the quality of supplies. Um, because we do understand that it can be very expensive, but this is truly about providing some um, something that's absolutely critical and providing it in a way that it provides that access um, and support. Um, specific to the public comment, I really want to appreciate that. Um, and I will provide additional details after speaking with our Director of Operations about ensuring that we are also meeting concerns of privacy um, for the use of the supplies. And I also want to just share with anyone who might be interested in taking a broader look at this issue, there's an incredible handbook guide that was created um, and is available online and really talks about um, the rollout of this, um, which is essentially in its third phase now, how it's really grown. And one of the things that I really appreciate about the handbook is it does center the why um, and it raises students' voice. And I think it really helps us to provide further education about how critical this is because the success of something like this, um, it's gonna take everyone to be successful. And so I think the more that we talk about it and the more that we understand it, um, the more successful we'll be in meeting the new, the needs of our students and staff.
Thank you so very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you. Yeah, I apologize. I did want to add one thing. First of all, thank you, Ms. Payne, for explaining that and for the beautiful quote. Uh, Board, one of the things that we discuss um, that's an issue is, as Ms. Payne mentioned, this third phase, a little bit of the rollout is um, the right usage of the products um, that our students are using them for the right reason. Also that um, there's a way to notify school staff when they're out. Uh, one of our governance meetings, we were up in O Valley High School and um, just happened that we, there's a bath- there was a bathroom in the library that has a dispenser and it was out, right? And we thought it was so ironic, we were discussing that. Um, and the, the thing is that it's becoming a new process, right? So one of the things I want to encourage schools educators is that we are checking and that we are asking students if they have access so that we can then actually support the schools to get their resources, to get the training if necessary, um, so that it's done appropriately and they have the right uh, the right resources. And part of it, what we heard was also taking away the stigma of someone asking for these things, right? Because the problem is that sometimes if it's out, people are not gonna go and ask a teacher or administrator because they might be ashamed for doing that. So we gotta also change that culture of, of shame, right? So it was just one more piece that, that we discussed. That staff is thinking through how to, how to uh, do and implement. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Staff, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have one public comment. Cheryl, set up. Please unmute yourself.
Um, on this issue, thank you for, for um, bringing this issue to the board. I, I want to just say that we've, I've been working with Alliance for Girls on this for a few years now. And we've brought this very issue to San Francisco Unified and Oakland Unified and also in Sacramento. So if you haven't had a chance to work with Alliance for Girls, it's the largest uh, organization nationwide that has been working on this issue, even in Sacramento. And I would just say, make sure that you're not just um, doing this from your aspect, but actually working with girls on different types of products, different sizes of products. And just like when we give out bag lunches, have kits ready so that they can pick them up and that there's no questions asked. Um, that is the best way to make sure that you're doing this from the girl's standpoint. That we have found that especially when there's breaks, that, that is when many girls lack these products. It, it, it's not just in a poverty issue, it's an access issue, period. It's not just for them. Sometimes it's a younger sister or a mother or another uh, female in the household for which they are uh, needing these products. Thank you so much.
Our next public comment is Allison Hui. Please unmute yourself.
Uh, thank you for your um, patience, uh, both trustees and staff members. I, I just, I'm telling you, I have a student who has a 504 who necessitates the use of um, needing access to appropriate disposal receptacles in, in school. And they don't exist in all of our schools and in all of our bathrooms. And if, uh, I'm so, so grateful for the policies and the work that you've done on this policy. If we do not also include the um, appropriate uh, disposal receptacles in this policy, I worry that we've only addressed half of the problem. Um, but I thank you for your efforts so far and I'm so, so grateful for everything you've done so far.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, let's go to questions. Do we have any questions? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this. I love it. I understand it complies with all recent California state laws. Is there anything in here that supersedes the law that is more than the law asks for?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll have comments at the end.
Actually, President, may I respond? I think, Trustee Reckler, one of the things that Ms. Payne was actually mentioning um, about the type of product is what I would consider to be above what is required. Facility staff is thinking about not getting the cheapest kind, which is not really what young women maybe would want in, in the first place. But um, to give, sorry, I was, I lost my train of thought with her. Uh, but to actually, uh, somebody was either clapping or um, gosh, someone help me. I was talking. Oh, but the actual ti- type of product, uh, that is not required by law, that we are thinking about um, being more thoughtful than what is being required. Um, also about the number of accessible spaces uh, that the law required versus what we're doing. Ms. Payne, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, that was from the committee.
Yeah, I would just add, um, while it's not specifically named in the policy, there's a number of different ways that we're looking to use our implementation um, to go above and beyond um, what the simple law requires. And I think two of the key components of that, beyond just the type of supplies being provided, is really part- is really partnering with the sites. It's about having a safe place at your site. And that, that's pretty specific to the site. And so one of the requirements of the law says that you have to provide the notice that has the full language of the ed code, but it also identifies a contact that you can go to if you need supplies. And so one of the things that we talked about is some people may feel more comfortable having a care package from someone that they feel safe with on site. And I think we heard that in public comment as well. Um, and so instead of making those essential decisions that are happening out of an operation shop, really partnering with the sites, um, to kind of wrap around. And then the signs that we're looking at purchasing, um, we've looked at doing it in a way that we could update that information, right? As there's a change, because we truly believe that the best implementation of this is going to happen, um, in partnership with the sites, right? Through that education, through that outreach, through the education, um, through the resource and through making sure that we're identifying those safe spaces on campus where people can go, um, that may not just be the restroom, right? But it's not specifically named in the policy to your question.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments? Uh, it was on questions, wasn't it? Sorry. Any other questions? Seeing no questions, let's go to comments. Two-minute comments, please. Trustee Reckler, wait, wait for the clock and then go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. I do have a couple of comments. So first, I'm thrilled to see this. And then I read through some of these guides. I found one guide from the ACLU and I, I found another guide which had some language that I really loved, but that I couldn't find it. But I would like to encourage the policy to include a couple of sentences that say something like, "On occasion, the superintendent or superintendent's designee shall, shall survey product users to determine if different, more effective product offerings should be procured." And what I'm specifically thinking about is that over time, products have actually gotten better and yet, you know, you're, I don't know if any of you remember those blocks that we used to get that were like an inch thick and that, when there were more, there were better products available. So I'd like to see something like that added, just like, hey, on occasion, you go out and go, hey, or, you know, are we suiting your needs? Is there better stuff out there? Um, as far as signage, I think signage needs to be in Spanish too and maybe in other languages. I also think there needs to be a sign that says, "Do not flush", and I think it needs to be a circle with the big X, like, "Don't put this in the toilet". And then, um, uh, we need receptacles everywhere because otherwise they're going to end up in the toilet and then we're going to have like major plumbing bills. So the receptacles in all toilets are really important, and people use pads. Like, somebody who called in said they had an elementary stu- school student that uses menstrual, menstrual pads. You know, if they don't have a place to put that, it will go in the toilet or, you know, who knows where else. But I think that, uh, I'd like to see that in the spec as well, um, to ensure that all bathrooms have the little receptacle with the bag and all that other stuff. And other than that, I'm thrilled to see this, and thank you.
President Smith-Folds, may I ask, Trustee Reckler, to repeat the language that she's hoping? Never mind. She, never mind. She just gave it to me. Thank you.
I was actually going to say periodically, but then I changed.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Trustee Wilson.
I just want to start off by saying, uh, I'm in full support of providing menstrual products in women's and old, uh, gender bath, uh, restrooms. But providing these products in at least one boys restroom, as stated in the 3517 point one menstrual equity document, should not, should not be the primary focus. It's important to first address the need for urinal dividers in the boys restrooms. This would ensure the privacy and create a more comfortable environment for all students using the boys restrooms urinals. This should be done before implementing for the restroom changes, such as adding, uh, menstrual products in the boys restrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Go ahead, uh, Trustee Espinoza Jr.
Thank you so much. Um, thank you for this, um, menstrual equity. This is amazing, um, all put together. I do have one suggestion I think I would like to see. It says that this is going to be serving, um, schools with grades between three to twelve. Um, I understand from my s- small understanding of how it works, menstrual cycle works, um, it can happen at any time, at any part. So maybe we could get directions on how to use these products put into the bathrooms in case they may not understand or, you know, first experience, they need to know how to use it. Thank you.
So first of all, that's brilliant. Um, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, you had comments?
I don't have a comment. I was wondering if I could respond to Mr., uh, to Trustee Wilson's suggestion.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, we, that is part of the law, so we can't really, uh, even if we wanted to, although there's many reasons why it's happening, uh, we, uh, we can't do that. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew the reasoning, uh, the reasoning way.
Absolutely. I, I think I, um, I'm going to try and propose a future agenda item for addi- adding urinal dividers to the male restroom, so. Thank you.
Any other comments? There's also a, um, there's a student at Deansah that wants the bathrooms to go all the way down so you can't, you guys know about, because you're students, right? So adding an agenda item about looking at our restrooms and their functionality and their, um, uh, functionality probably would be the best word. I think that's absolutely can be added to the agenda, so we're writing that down to, to have a discussion. Um, another great person to reach out and contact about those facilities would be Teacher Payne. She's very good. She's right there. I thought she was on Zoom. But it's, uh, she will be very good to kind of navigate that too. Like, how do we look at it? What's the costing of it? What other things can we do to listen to our students about how to make the restrooms a pla- a safe space for them? So thank you for that. I do have a comment. Um, when we're talking about period poverty or menstrual equity, I want us to make sure that when we're looking at the products, we're looking for teen sizes. Grown-up sizes are different than teen sizes, and we don't want to mix the two because I need an adult-sized menstrual product and my daughters don't, right? So it's one of those things that's part of when we're having these discussions. Um, also, the most, the healthiest product is going to cost a healthy amount, right? It just costs more. If you buy organic versus non-organic, it costs more. If you buy something that's cotton versus not, it's going to cost more. So we do have to look at the costing factor, but I always lean towards safety. It's a safety issue, just like it's a humanitarian issue, just like it's a health issue that when we are putting things near on or around our bodies, they need to be as safe as possible. Um, there are other things like period panties. There's other things like, um, the care packages. I think a lot of people rather have the care packages because they're nice, they're small, they're, um, it's not as obvious what you're caring around. But to all of this, I think that it has to be education, education, education. We have to educate our administrating, our, our students that administrate and those who don't, right? Because we know that getting pads are ten to fifteen dollars for a pack of twenty-four. So we may have a male student who's getting it for his mom, right? And who will take that product and take it home. I think we have to continue to look at, well, I guess I said it, the education around miss, uh, administration. I also, when we talked in governance, also talked about the punishing people between classes. Like, if I'm late to class because I'm doing something to take care of my hygiene, how is that a punishment, right? How is that punitive? So what does that look like? So I think this is just the first dive, but I think we need to have a deeper dive into these conversations. Okay, Board, thank you very much. We are now moving to great, comments from the Board. All right, comments from the Board and future agenda items. We are going to put two minutes on the clock. This is where you give your final closing comments, and if you have those future agenda items, please let them be known at this time. Anyone have closing comments? What? Okay, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
I would like to quickly state that I am trying to get on a future agenda, uh, the mandatory, uh, CPR training, but not only for the initial, um, becoming a teacher or staff, but also every year, uh, year or two to, uh, make sure that, uh, teachers and staff are well-prepared in case of an emergency.
Thank you so very much. Did, did we capture that? Thank you so very much. Any other closing comments? Nope. Seeing none, we are now adjourned at nine twenty-two. The next Board of Education, the next regular Board of Education meeting is scheduled for October the ninth, twenty twenty-four, at Levanya Dejean Middle School. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.